I've not heard from MoSAY. Okay, I'm the first one. All kinds of people that don't show up.
So we're gonna have to kind of figure out.
Listen, see how.
Oh, I'm telling you guys.
We'll get to it.
If I'm like.
We'll get to it.
Yeah. Never mind. Alright, we look.
Just in order to call out this right there.
We're.
Are you sure?
We gotta address complaints.
Oh, alright, great.
Yeah, I mean.
I know. Yes. Yep. Hundred percent.
I mean, it's very difficult to do sometimes, but if they're in the habit of doing it, and they never wanted to address it.
Right.
I always thought it was bad on the answer.
I think it is good.
I think it's a good idea to answer it, at least try to.
Yep. I don't hear any ideas.
Right.
Just contact information. Sounds like it's on the meeting. Yeah. Alright, we good? Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission as well as a public hearing. At this time, I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll so move. I'll move to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Why, oh, sorry. Yasi?
Yeah.
Weeden?
Yes.
And Swann?
Yes. Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear the public comments on the proposed short-term rental ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-five dot zero nine slash four four three. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect and promote the health and safety and welfare of the city's residents, properties owners, visitors, and neighborhoods by allowing short-term rentals within the city under certain conditions, certain zoning districts, and establishing standards and regulations for the operation of the same. At this time, the city commission will have public comments on the proposed short-term registration ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot zero nine slash four four three. All persons wishing to comment should be given an opportunity to do so. Any person addressing the commission shall do so at the podium, state his or her name for the record, and direct their comments directly to the commission. In the event many people wish to comment, as I am presiding officer, may determine that each person speaking shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. As the presiding officer, I may terminate any public comments that are unreasonably lengthy, violate the city's rules or procedure for the city commission meetings, or unrelated to the subject of the public hearing. At this time, we will take public comments. Please approach the podium and please keep your comments to three minutes if used.
My name is Bud Holmes. I live at three fifteen Terracoup Street. Regarding the development of a policy restricting short-term rentals in the city of Buchanan, there was a moratorium established on or about April first of this year banning anyone from renting their home on a short-term basis. What's the legal basis for this ban? There's no law against it, so how can you restrict it arbitrarily? There was no public input on this decision. In fact, we would have known nothing about it except we happened to put our house on the market about that same week and had interested parties wanting to buy it until they found out that there was a moratorium against short-term rentals. Subsequently, we inquired of the city manager and the clerk and then attended the subcommittee meeting and listened to the discussion between committee members, including Commissioner Viancy. There were several lines of reasoning we found faulty, but the meeting was structured so that feedback after the discussion was prohibited on that topic. First of all, there was an assumption that every home used as a short-term rental would cost the school district about ten thousand dollars more, assuming multiple children who would not be moving into that house. However, new residents don't all have children. Some families who live here choose to educate their children in other districts or at home. There's no way to correlate home sales with increased student enrollment statistically because you just don't know who's going to buy a home. And besides, a non-homestead house is assessed a much greater portion of property tax, which does impact the district positively without having to serve any other students. Number two, short-term renters are probably the most likely source of customers for our several new and existing restaurants in town. Residents may treat themselves occasionally, but visitors will be looking for a restaurant every day. Number three, the commissioner equated owners of these short-term rentals as slum lords. This is ridiculous on its face. Any owner of a short-term rental wants their home rented regularly. Since every rental review impacts future rentals, the short-term rental owner is as motivated as the best homeowner to maintain their property to the highest standards. Unlike a long-term rental, the short-term owner or manager must spend time at least weekly inspecting and cleaning their property. Number four, as to concerns about disturbing a given neighborhood, there are noise ordinances on the books which can be enforced anytime it becomes necessary. And I wonder how many calls the police department has had so far to respond to disturbances at a short-term rental in town. Number five, making policies to preclude possible future problems only invites the expansion of government into people's lives, reduces freedom, and invokes the law of unintended consequences. We are not Saint Joe or New Buffalo. I request that this moratorium be set aside. There are much bigger issues to deal with in our town. Commissioner Viancy also stated that there are always winners and losers. I don't accept that. We should be working toward a community with win-win solutions for ourselves and each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Rick Paniglau. Bud, that was very well said, and I think there's a couple of other points that should be made. That you're really cutting off some sorely needed investment in some of these residential communities. These, some of these homes I've seen them, they don't qualify for mortgages. They sit unoccupied, unrented, unrepaired, and they're gonna continue to do so. They're blading on the community. And I think that, you know, a more thoughtful approach would be to perhaps limit them to one every three homes, one every four homes, and you target the designated blocks where you want the investment. I think that a more thoughtful process would be, would be appropriate rather than prohibiting them completely. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Okay. Seeing nobody else approach the podium, at this time, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yasi?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting. We do not have any recognition if everybody will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, we do not have an invocation. Can we have roll call, please?
Weeden?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Honey? And Viancy?
Yes.
And Form?
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will take public comments on agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes and approach the podium and state your name for the record. Thank you. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. We do not have any scheduled matters on the floor. At this time, we will do reports from departments, committees, and boards, SMAC, SPAR, Planning Commission, landfill, DDA, or Joint Water and Sewer Board. Mr. Swann?
Ah, landfill, really only hot topic currently out there is we are doing a lot of gas well drilling, or preparation, so we awarded a contract on that to get our gas production up. It's also part of our permitting for, I think it's correct, we're here for the gases that the nat- the landfill naturally emits. We turn those gases into energy, electricity, and sell that electricity for revenue. At this point in time, we're working with Train, not Train, Kinder Morgan on some different contract negotiations to see if they'll invest in some of that gas well replacement since they are a direct benefactor of that. So, just, that's the hot topic out there at the moment is negotiations with Kinder Morgan, equipment purchases. I've been on, super exciting at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Viancy?
Plan Commission, um, there's seven people on that commission and we really discussed it, and I don't like taking the power away from the individuals, but we had to start somewhere. And that just goes to show you, as private citizens, you gotta really keep an eye on what's going on down here at your government. Because if you don't pay attention, you're gonna get stuck. I feel for them, I really do. The moratorium and the timing was absolutely awful for them, absolutely awful for them. But if you make exceptions, you get caught up in a, a can of worms. And we had that discussion, we talked about it really hard, and the pros and the cons, the pros won, I'm sorry. Um, I, I, not really sorry, it's just, I don't like the regulations anymore, but on the other hand, we are going to become a New Buffalo or Three Oaks because they didn't have anything in place. We're not, we're not New Buffalo, we're not Saint Joe, but we're trying to get ahead of it and deal with it before it does become a problem because it's always more difficult to deal with after the fact. And I do wanna reiterate the slum lord comment, had nothing to do with bed and breakfasts, it had to do with, a lot with the fact that we do have several slum lords in the city, but we didn't have any way of checking them. Now we do. Um, and, I mean, it just goes to show you how people take your words and twist it around. But I was one of seven commissioners on the planning committee, and we spent a full hour and a half discussing ins and outs, and we went with the numbers. And everything that we did, it was more, way more complicated than it needed to be. It was just very bad timing for these people and, you know, I can't say anything else because it's gonna get misconstrued.
Anything else on the planning commission?
Um, we've got the short term, and then we're gonna have the zoning. We should discuss that and the hearing at the next meeting, first of July, or September, and we'll be pushing that through.
Very good. Awesome.
You know?
Thank you, Dan. Uh, Ms. George?
Yes, so, um, I'm on the bar board, and we are working on currently right now the disc golf course. It's come along really great. Um, we're probably about like halfway through, I would say. Uh, a big, huge thank you to Bill Goodrich. Um, he is actually a resident here in Buchanan, and all of the materials, I mean, he's offered to pay for those too, but, um, all of the hard work, the concrete, everything was pretty much donated. Uh, with volunteering and, um, some of the people that he knows and he works with, so, uh, big thank you to him, and, uh, we plan to open, like, the grand opening officially next spring, just to do with the signage and that kinda thing. Uh, we wanna make it look presentable as far as the eye goes to, but, um, as far as just playing, I believe it's September ninth, correct? Yes. Other than that, um, I think, I, we're still waiting on the grant to hear back from the grant on Catherine Park, so we should be, yeah, we should be, uh, hearing back pretty soon on that, and hopefully we can get some new equipment in there and get some free money, so.
Remind, remind the public again what the amount for that grant was if it were to get awarded.
Before we put the grant in, we had a hundred thousand dollars set aside for that project, so regardless of we have the grant or not, it'll be a hundred thousand dollars in investment in Catherine Park, new playground equipment during this fiscal year. Uh, we did ask for another hundred fifty thousand dollars above that from the state of Michigan that would have to match dollar for dollar, so if we get that grant, it'll actually be three hundred thousand dollars in improvements to the park, half grant, half locally funded. So, either way, a hundred thousand dollars or a three hundred thousand dollars, so it's gonna be a much nicer way to weigh.
Fantastic.
By the time next place is here.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we can't, we can't reiterate that enough. I think that's something for the public and on the record for us, you know, we, we had it as a focus for years now, and we're finally getting to that point. Thank goodness Tony came along and, and offered up an opportunity for us to get a grant, so, and we've been winning grants, so I'm hoping that that goes well for us on that.
We've been saving that money for four more years.
Four years, yeah. Uh, DDA, uh, we are currently wo- working with Brian DeSett from the county on our TIF plan. Uh, our current director, our representative for the DDA is, is in the room as well, and I think that, you know, I'm really pleased with the progress that we've made. I think that once we have, uh, the DDA information in place, we really are gonna hit the ground running, give us a plan for the money, and, and as we know, we have to spend that money to stay within the TIF, if you're not aware, so, uh, we will be appropriating that to the necessary places downtown. And when the town is complete, I think the DDA is really gonna hit the ground running, uh, with the individuals we have. So, look forward to that. Uh, anything, Joint Water Sewer Board? I don't think there's any additional.
Yeah, we have a, yeah, we only meet quarterly on that.
Okay. Alright, moving on to unfinished business, ordinance twenty twenty-five dot zero nine slash four four three, consider the first reading of the ordinance on short-term rentals. At this time, I will take a motion on, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dot zero nine slash four four three.
Do we need to read that or not?
The first reading. So, it's available if anybody in the public.
It's about six pages long.
It's about six pages. You know, technically, if you can say as presented, um, this is just your first read, so, and as long as you guys don't make any further changes, um, you can, but if you want to right now. Uh, it's been on our website, it's been distributed at City Hall, um, as long as you say as presented, you guys have obviously read through it with your packets and seen this multiple times now, so.
So, make this motion as presented instead of first reading?
You can make it first pre- um, let's do, approve first reading as presented and then, yeah.
Okay.
And then directing for the next public hearing, the second public, the second public hearing and the final read.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll move to approve the, um, God, I don't teach this. The, yeah. Ordinance as presented, twenty twenty-five dot zero nine slash four four three as presented. Good enough, and direct Clerk Langston to schedule the final public hearing, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Sorry about the lack of oxygen.
No, you're good. Uh, do we have support?
I'll support.
Discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Viancy?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, Brownfield redevelopment authority services, consider awarding a contract for Brownfield redevelopment authority services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As you know, the, uh, city of Buchanan has a Brownfield authority that has been enacted for a number of years. Uh, we have three current brownfields that were started around between two thousand and two thousand and two. Uh, those have kind of run their course, but we're not sure they were closed out and everything, eyes not peace crossed. Uh, we still have over two hundred thousand dollars in that brownfield account, so we're looking to, we went through a process, we solicited RFPs to a wide range of consultants, we received three, we interviewed two. Uh, based on that, we recommend Fleece and Vanderbrink to come in to kind of review all of our formal work, make sure everything's squared away, and to get our brownfield, uh, authority ready to move forward. As we know, there's gonna be some more development here in town, some of the projects coming up available, the downtown project finishing up. Uh, this will position us from a developer's approach to be able to do that. An important thing to keep in mind is brownfields have changed from what they were when they were more about environmental cleanups, they're more about financing mechanisms for specific properties as well. So, as a developer comes in, we'll mesh them up with Fleece, we'll negotiate who's taking care of that fee, and the new brownfield plans will be brought before the authority and then before you guys for consideration. Uh, just a side note on that, last Friday, we received a letter from the library, uh, who is requesting, they want to be on the agenda, we're gonna put them on the next agenda, they're requesting just if the libraries are considered for brownfield, we notice them officially. So, we'll have that as a, hey, there's no standard client to do that, to be clear, but, because they request, I wanna make sure we're put on the agenda just so they know that we are tagging some of that fact. But, um, at this point, for now, we're recommending the award of the contract to Fleece and Vanderbrink for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Very good.
I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
What are the three brownfields? Will you remind us?
Yep, the one is Third Street, which is, they're all around the former Clark property and that, so, uh, if you know where, um, Layman's is and the former Clark property where they grew up, it's still here, it's still there. We have the one over here that is the, uh, where the gym is now, that is, is a brownfield as well. And then, I am gonna screw it up when I say it, but it's not the old voice of music, it's the old.
Electric voice.
Electric voice, I get over on that.
Well, that's a super site, isn't it, still? So, that's the, that's the three.
Right.
And what are we getting for the seventeen thousand dollars?
Well, they, what they are gonna do, they're gonna do a few things. They are going to be, making sure those old ones are closed out properly and just organize our files and make sure everything's good. Um, because, you know, there's been a lot of transition over the years, it's not, it's not to the point where we're making sure we're, we wanna be comfortable moving forward knowing there's new development. And then they are gonna update the bylaws and requirements of Brownfield Authority. Uh, Act, Public Act three eighty-one, which oversees all the TIF financing stuff here in Michigan, has changed significantly since our brownfield was active, so they will also be doing revisions to that. So, the new Brownfield Authority that's up and running is ready to go under the proper ordinance and regulations.
So, the property on the hill is not a brownfield by any definition, uh, old gas station and the feed mill?
Nope, that has not been in our brown, it could have been the Brownfield Authority down the road, and I would expect a developer looking at that site would ask it to be included in the brownfield, but at this point in time, it is not the brownfield.
Okay, so it was all the old Clark and electric boys?
Yeah, exactly. It was all our.
But electric boys does fall under a different category of rules than.
They are a super lot, right.
So, okay, but, and that's pretty much been taken over by the new owner.
Right. Yeah, a lot of these brownfields are done, they just need to be cleaned up and closed out.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, damn it, as Tony kinda alluded there, it doesn't have to be contaminated necessarily anymore. They have a term called functionally obsolete, which in a nutshell, if it can't be used in a modern setting anymore, they slide it in under this brownfield designation to open up additional dollars for funding.
But, I mean, it, it, you know, I do that to mock it and be sarcastic, I'm sorry. But on the other hand, that's basically what it boils down to, but if you don't follow the rules, you know, I mean, we went through so much with this, this back here, um, and I was just a brand-new commissioner, and my red flags was going off like crazy. But, um, that being said, you know, I plan on being very involved in this brownfield, because there's some things that I really think that we need to do with it and make sure that we do, so.
It, it's gonna be a great development tool for us moving forward, and if we don't have it, we'll be at a competitive disadvantage to our neighbors who can have it as an option for developers, so, we look forward to working with the commission on this to get this back on the money.
And it goes back to what we talked about before. I think that the lack of communication and understanding of what the utilization of that was for, and then not to clear explanation to you, was probably a lot of your frustration.
Well, there was never any answers.
Exactly.
You could ask the questions all day long, and even, I mean, I, just for public note, um, I call Chicago, where's the headquarters and the oversight, and they overview every five years, and, you might as well call the wall. I mean, you know, it's just kinda like Mosaic.
And the fundings for this is coming from the brownfield fund itself?
It is eligible brownfield expense or existing brownfield funds, so this one, zero impact on the community's general fund dollars.
Right.
That's the best part.
And there's a real misconception out there because Facebook is a soapbox, soapbox opera, you know, I'm just wondering, it's a soapbox opera.
Yeah, they're really not the big districts like they were before, they're like, it's redevelopment, they're gonna save money.
And Mama's not singing bass, bass, rather.
Yeah, so I think as we move through this, that's something that, and it may seem redundant, but we continue to communicate that, reiterate that over and over and over and over again. I mean, it sounds like, uh, it's gonna be repetitive, but I think it's necessary to really drive that home.
Yeah, I don't think there's a big enough hammer.
Yeah, well, we'll keep, we'll keep swinging it then. Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion on the Brownfield redevelopment authority services from Fleece and Vanderbrink.
I move to approve the contract for Brownfield redevelopment authority services to Flice, Flice, is that how you say it?
Fleece.
Fleece and Vanderbrink, and the amount is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Very good. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Weeden?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, consider entering a closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two six eight, section eight A, to conduct a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager. Uh, so at this time, I will take a motion to enter closed session.
I'll move to approve to enter closed session pursuant to MCL one five dot two six eight, section eight A, personnel evaluation of the city manager.
Very good. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. We are currently in closed session.
Uh, we have a roll call, I don't know.
A roll call, sorry.
Swann?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Viancy?
Yes.
And Weeden?
Yes. Thank you.
We won't be out there long. Just not hoping we gotta rake him over the corners.
I'm so glad. Are you still, is it Thursday, um, Tuesday, or on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Well, I think it might be a bunch.
Almost create this. Districts of the. Taxes that's. Charged. So, generally. Which allows. Developer. Paying back. For several.
Yes.
The development. Cycle. And ensure that. Access. Side of the. Times.
Oh.
So. It's usually, usually it's a. Building. It has. She's. Across the street. We don't like.
Oh.
From Woodford. Boxes downtown. Where there be. Sorry. I think it's. Well. I'm sweet. I'm sorry.
Boy. Get your.
So. Yeah. Having special. This one now. So. I tell you. What I. Say. Across the street. Like. If you don't. It's. Reality. I'm. You're. So. How. Does it? Prevent somebody from. Living here. That's. Two. Either one. We can. And. Yeah. Three. Speak. Six. Just. Edible landscape. So. She calls. Her. Did you order yours? I told you. I'm so. I got another. Yes. And then. Oh, good. Oh. I know better. I'm very careful. No. Uh, Mike. Now. Well, over there. Are they done? Oh. I thought. So. So. So they'll be. I guess it's gonna be. It's. School system used to do that too. So. Yeah. I can. And, um. I like to see. See. Hope you can just put in your cards. They can be all good. You can do that. Typically. Cause they may have. When you got this. Well, there were a number of. We. Medium. Job. That's great. Qinghai. Oh, so it's just. Because. Yeah. I know, right now, this is. Like a penny. Yeah. Yeah. I'm waiting to ask Rachel. It might get hot. Typically. Yeah. He was in town, he texted. It's good. It's exciting. I felt.
Yeah. No, they, they.
They. Yeah, I did, I did all the patio, it was basically. Got that table out there. Got situated. That, that, and then. Got a patio. Free. It's. But. And then. Gosh, I wish I would. It's. There's. What do you do with it? The. And when I. Stop. Bring it. I go and get my. Where's it at? Kids. Where's it at? So. They. Yeah. My name is. Yeah. Okay. Well, yeah, you can go. Where is it? Chase. I just took a few minutes. Yeah, I could deserve. Soon I'll go over. Thank you. Well, I guess I didn't miss too much.
No.
I mean. I was watching the news and eating my supper at that time.
Then, while you're here now, that's a bad.
I'm. Nice to meet you. My, my sister is. She's. 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 He's like, it was fun for a while. So now, it's a typical thing. Typical things happen here. She's. I can have a. But.
It's gonna be really nice.
Oh, yeah.
People just got.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah. Yeah. And I think. Oh. It's gonna be part of. Oh, a part of the lawn? No. Part of. Oh. You know, I think it was just. What the people that live alongside be able to get to their houses. There's, there's my. Oh, okay. It's just the side. Yeah. It's. So. Trying to picture things. I understand that. They're going. Better school. Why do you? On Charles. Oh, okay. And we're not supposed to be a tutorial, but we're the shortcuts, so we've got tons of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And you want. All of the. City. Be the work. I. Just. Just. Works. So. Stay. So. Five. In that. Paxton. They all. These chats. Still. For me. Pardon. What? I. Or is the. Just being. Oh. No. Okay, I was just getting ready to ask you. And then, and when I seen you, I was like, no. So. Yes, I understand that. Can't tell you. I'm doing.
Yeah, that's right, you need to raise for that.
Yeah. He's.
We went, that's.
Oh, yeah, you saw him, you saw him doing his thing in the, uh.
No, we talked himself for city hall.
Uh.
I figured you giving.
Uh, no, I come in the morning and I'm like. I, somebody like. Watch the wars. Smell. Like. I'm like.
I think it always looks.
Yes, they. He's, uh, he's. He's, uh. Yeah, he's trying, uh, my spirit guy.
Nice.
Good things are gonna happen for me. I was told you could. First. Yeah, they're in a closed session now. Seriously, what'd you cover up there, Juan? Yeah. But then I looked at the clubhouse. So, third. The. So. Have you got a cross street today? Have you got a cross street today? I was so upset. Really, I. That. Couple boxes and all that, and then I saw the fence and I was like, I'm like. I know. I was like. Hey, you, you've seen that.
Well, it's like.
Hey. You've seen the fencing up and down the street now, right?
I did.
It's so bad, I mean, unfortunate, it's like, uh. I'm saying. I'm tired of this. Yeah, the businesses. Now, it's like. Cost. Cost. All the.
Don't get me started.
Then of course the school. Yeah. So. It's only two months.
They say.
We can. Come on, it's got two fingers that stick down. Oh. Slam. It's. Now. Yeah. There's pretty. Like the. What are you putting in there for bait? And. Lettuce, put lettuce. Go. That gentleman. Or. Sales. What that could've done. Yeah. Just having them be at home. And. Take away. Also. Yeah.
Yeah, they were working.
There's. Further. Reach. I'm seeing. Every. Spring. People wanna come. Go to business. It's. And I think they're researching. Yeah. Short-term. Yeah, right. Business. I can imagine. Which is fine. There's. You know, schools there. And. Yeah. Oh, that's good. So. I don't, I don't. More. Cause. Yeah. People that do short-term. You know, two, three years. They end up selling. Four. Saying. This one's right up. Forget if it was. We have. Yeah. Yeah. And. We're betting, and I'm guessing a pretty poor son of a. Yeah. Yeah. Let's. Yeah, for sure. Absolutely, for sure, because you know it stands up there and you rent it on a short-term basis, you know, they're not gonna let you slide when it's. And you are going to hear about it, so will everybody else. That's.
For the.
Oh. Yeah. You're so disappointed. Like, so we wanna know. Yeah. Coming in. So, are you bringing your grandfather or? Maybe. Goes through. Well, there's gonna be another. Well, I'm sure we change this. You know, I did, uh. I mean, it's. What brought me? Uh, the term. So, I think it's. Talking about. Like. Hit my. That's. Yeah. No more than fifteen percent for block. No two makes each other. Yeah. And two makes each other. Well. Two amount of blocks. Because, you know, some of these blocks. Down. Yeah. There's one. You should want to look at. Alright. There's one. I should. Five. And I. Yeah. Hasn't it been a beautiful day? It's been a nice quarter. I actually sat down on the porch and read. Yeah. I've got a big. Porch. Yeah, but it's been so hot. It got up to a hundred and five for a couple of days. Hundred and five? Seriously. Nothing. My. You know, it's all. Oh, on the porch, got to a hundred and stuff, and so. Yeah. Well, but that's just two more. Yeah, some people might complain about it being too chilly now, but I don't care. I can do it better. I've got. So I can. When I went to. It's so good. The. Yes. Yes. Yeah. It's. Not that. Do I? Really? Restaurants. Yeah, they got a raid. It's just like. January. I didn't really see it so much. I paid the same rate every week. Yeah. But they kept telling me, well, you're. I kept seeing how much. Restaurants. Didn't have to buy other places. Wait. Breaking another restaurant. And then I started asking. But then people started. And I. They're closer, they're closer. We. And I was going crazy, cause. I thought. Person. I'm here. You look, you look like you just came off. Thanks for sticking around, folks. Oh. On a private. Yeah. In this one?
Well, no, not, I'm, um. And.
Okay.
At this time, I'll take a motion to re-enter open session.
I'll so move to re-enter open session.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Giantski.
Yes.
Weena.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes. Very good. Okay, I just would like to share with the public, uh, the average numbers, uh, that Tony received on his first six-month review here with the city. Uh, he, and I think Mr. Swim had said it exceptionally well, you know, for, for Tony to have in the first six months, the scores that he did, it's indicative of the amount of work and effort that he's put in and dedication to the city. Uh, and it cannot be underscored whatsoever. Uh, so his average score was a thirty-two point four, uh, and I think to, for, once again, to Mr. Swim's point, that we look at it from that six-month period and, and really anticipate that what he's going to give us in the next six months and the years to come, uh, are going to be indicative of that. And I don't have any concern that we're going to drop below that, but, you know, there is times where in your working career, uh, you can only give a hundred percent on every single project at every single time. So, I'm sure there's gonna be times where maybe it drops a little bit, but it's definitely not, uh, representation of who he is holistically. So, uh, we cannot thank you enough for being part of the city and, and what you've done for this team and, uh, what you bring to the commission and to the city. So, thank you so much. Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will move on to expenditures. Consider approving expenditures in an amount of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll move to approve expenditures in the amount of seventy-six thousand, four ninety-three and thirty-three cents as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I have support.
Discussion?
Um, with it being the amount that it was, um, there was no, there's getting to be fewer and fewer questions.
Yeah.
Cause it's getting tighter and tighter all the time.
Yeah.
So, and I mean, I would, it used to be on a consent calendar and I'm just happy that we do this.
Yeah.
I really am every meeting, because the thing about it is that gives me a chance to get the questions out there and there's been a couple of things that he didn't catch, and I did, just a couple. But, um, still.
Yeah.
Everybody care eyes that's on it, is just overseeing.
I think it's, it's, we say at every meeting, and I don't care that we do, it's transparency. It's telling the public exactly what we're spending money on, we understand what the, the spend is. And to, to the, s- Mr. Swim's point, every time we reconcile at the end of the month and it's always zero. That is the most exciting thing in the world, cause for the public's knowledge, that means you're spending it and you're just telling us exactly where the money's going. Can't have a better situation. So, not a lot of cities can say that and, and the clerk will confirm. Okay, uh, roll call, please.
We're gonna need a motion. We really need a motion. We made a motion, sorry.
Yeah, you, we usually do the conversation before.
Lack of oxygen.
Yes.
Yes.
Weena.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to communications, there is none. At this time, we will take public comments for non-agenda items. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record and please keep your comments to three minutes.
I'll drop.
Norm, what you always do.
I'll.
I gotta, I gotta be used to looking over here.
Yeah, I'm doll. Norm of Paris. Three zero four North Oak Street, and we're getting a drugstore.
Ah, yes.
We are.
Exciting.
We are.
Yeah, pharmacy, pharmacy, yes.
We. City can't operate without one.
That's fine.
A hard brick.
Thank you for that reminder, Norma. That is big news. Yes, agreed.
Yeah, my, I, I just, I didn't realize they opened, I'm gonna switch out at Walgreens.
There you go. Okay. Nice. Seeing no other public approach the podium, we will move on to city manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a few things, as, uh, Commissioner McGanski had mentioned, uh, September ninth will be the first, uh, final for the planning commission new ordinance. Have that up for you at your next meeting from there. Uh, just wanna follow up on Commissioner George and the disco, all the patterns, Bill, really sponsorships at this point, there's not many sponsor holes, we're gonna start working on that after the holiday weekend, this weekend. Uh, just wanna follow up, um, Commissioner George and the disco, all the pattern bill, really has sponsorships at this point, there's not many sponsor holes, we're gonna start working on that after the holiday weekend, this weekend, um, we've leaned on a couple commissioners that have looked at, maybe some help with that. Um, I just wanna point out, cause in addition to Bill, who's done an amazing job on this, Emma has done an outstanding job, kind of facilitating that disco course from the city's perspective, really grabbed a hold of it and managed it as a project, and she's done a great job for it, so, pleased to see her, tell her, congratulations. Um, as you know, you included a sidewalk program in your budget this year, um, they starting to get, uh, the, the downward slope out here, we actually put that RFP out for contractors, uh, to do about, with the budget we have, we're gonna do about three thousand square feet in the sidewalk, remove and replacement, um, once we get that bids in, and they'll be in this, within the next month, uh, Rich's finalized the program itself, we'll be bringing that to you, we plan on rolling that program out in October, doing a batch of sidewalks this fall, then a batch of sidewalks this spring, and again, if you wanna keep that in the budget, we're gonna create it as an annual program in the rest of sidewalk needs here in the city. Paving is underway right now on, uh, Red Bud and on River Street, as you know, as part of the contract we agreed this year, when we realized we had some issues after spring thaw on Liberty Street, um, they should be wrapping that up today, tomorrow, the latest, it'll be nice to get those streets done. Sherman, real quick, we have a project, we're still working through Punch List there, hopefully we'll get that here in the next month, uh, some updates on the downtown project, phase one, which is everything from the water plant to front street, all of the water lines have been replaced, all our mains and services, all the sewer mains, uh, just about are replaced, they'll be done in a few weeks with new services, uh, as you can see, there's a lot of curb going in, road is actually built on Third Street, and most are red bloods, so that should be ready for paving, um, an interesting thing, when we started de-watering these intersections, it's so deep this weekend, uh, Terry sent Mike and I, I kind of panicked, text on Saturday morning, like, we're down a lot, like, we're down like two hundred thousand gallons from the day before, which usually is like, where's there a busted pipe at? No, when they did the de-watering operation over there, to be able to get to that pipe, again, the water cable's at five feet, we're working at fifteen feet, so they're de-watering at about sixteen feet to be able to work in those trenches, that tells you how much water we were taking into these pipes, that's how bad these pipes were, when you think about that, we're taking in two hundred thousand gallons a day and processing it, we didn't need to, that's on top of the two hundred thousand gallons we've already taken out with the pipe work, so, I fully expect when we're done with this project, we were pumping around a million, million point one gallons a day through that plant, we're gonna be in the six hundred thousand gallon range today, so, we just picked up, that tells you how bad the pipes were, that we were bringing in not much groundwater for processing every day, but it also opens up capacity in our plant to certain new customers, should we be able to figure out those deals, so that's a great thing.
Is there, is it, have you looked at the, the cost analysis to what that?
Not had a chance to dig into that, but there definitely gonna be energy costs, there's definitely gonna be some operation savings on that, and we will get to looking at.
Cause I think that would be interesting for, for, to look at.
Once everything kind of sells out, we're seeing, like, we know these are kind of our flows now, we will do that, that's great.
That's gonna be great to see, I can't wait to see.
On phase two, which is front street itself, all the water mains are done, uh, water services have been changed over, a big part of it was a five-way intersection down here, at Renearson, and, uh, Red Bud in front, all that, that was a, that was a big piece to get done, that is pretty much ramble then now, and they are working their way down the street doing the sewer mains, so that's progressive well as well. Um, that's all I have, you guys brought up, so what's going on right now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Beyanski.
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna stay quiet tonight.
Very good. All right, Ms. George.
Yes. So, I just, uh, want to say, following the evaluation, uh, Tony's doing an excellent job, and we are very grateful and blessed to have him working for the city, and along with all of our staff, so, I appreciate you guys, you guys are great, um, and I appreciate this commission. Uh, Faith and Family Day was a great turnout, I don't know who all made it out there, but, uh, the, the previous people that ran it, um, they estimated that there were like four, four hundred, five hundred people there, there were a ton of people there, so, we had a great time, and I just wanted to make a public announcement, just letting, um, giving a thank you words due, so, um, Nathan Babcock from Buchanan Christian Church was very instrumental in hap, making that happen, and so was Stacy Martin from Live Action, and honestly, the whole group at Live Action is just great, uh, super happy that they came and they ran the music for free, they donated time, they helped wherever we needed them, um, and then Brendan Shea from Buchanan Nazarene Church, he also was very instrumental in making that happen, and I just wanna say thank you for that. Um, and then, a huge thank you to everybody that came out and was a part of that event, and made that, that's what really makes the event the event, everybody showing up and being a community, I know it's crazy, cause that's like the biggest event that we've had this year due to the construction, so, that was, uh, very encouraging, and I loved being a part of that, um, and then, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Swim?
Yeah, I mean, the big, the big news of the day was the, open up the email this morning, see the flow, the flow drop, I, I continue to be, it, it validates the reason for the city's investment, uh, you know, well, I anticipate what we're, we're just gaining in efficiencies, it's probably close, if not covering the debt service for the project itself, but when you can be self-sustaining, again, that's an assumption at this point, until we know, but it's, it's gotta be damn close, darn close, so, it's a good investment when it pays for itself, right? Love seeing action being taken out of the DDA, and God, I was on the agenda today, I know they worked really hard to get it here as quick as they could, and I know there's a, a good group of volunteers putting their heads together for the betterment of this community, specifically the downtown district, so, thank you, looking forward to what, what you bring in front of us next from spending plans, so we can start taking some additional action on what you guys wanna get done, and, and apparently, I need to look into this a little more, but welcome to the new pharmacy town, there'll probably be another follow-up, thank you to them for that, but, that's exciting progress as well, so, that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna take a minute to thank the DPW crew, uh, Mike, their work, uh, most people don't know this, they work in silence a lot of the time, uh, they work in hours that most people are sleeping, but, uh, on the record, what they did with the covert over by the grant, by the tin shop, unbelievable work, man, the, the amount of structure and time and effort they put in to get underneath that covert, and then structurally make that sound and pour that concrete, uh, man, you just see the, the pride in that, every time I walked down to the, the hotel and saw those guys working on it, they were so excited to show me everything that was happening to it, so, I mean, it's, it's really exciting to watch, the city workers are, have that amount of pride, and they take, and they wanna show you, they're excited about what they do, we're living for this city, so, uh, if you guys see the DPW guys driving around, please take a moment to thank them, uh, and also, on number two, the city center, uh, for those guys to go and put that effort in to make sure that audience is, is intact and safe, uh, and, and they, once again, showed me pictures of that, so, Mike, whatever you're doing, man, just keep doing it, uh, you're showing great leadership, and these guys are obviously, uh, returning that favor by, uh, giving the city, uh, a lot of effort to make things really nice, so, thank you for that. Uh, tomorrow, uh, the ribbon cutting over at the Grant Hotel, if everybody is, is available, at four o'clock, I believe that is, if that's correct, uh, please join us, I know that, uh, there's a, an unbelievable amount of work that went into that building to make it what it is today, uh, from what it was, it's just a, it seems like it was just a, a dirt, uh, cavity, right, with, with no activity for how many, how many decades, so, please join us tomorrow for that, if you're available. Uh, I think the final statement is, is that, you know, the, the elephant in the room, there is, there's been flyers, and if you haven't received one, uh, you've probably seen it out there in, in the, the never regions of, of the, of the web, uh, please know that it doesn't go unnoticed, uh, I am aware of what that appears to be, uh, I don't apologize for freedom of speech, I think we all in this room have the great, uh, luxury of living in the United States of America, and we have that freedom, I talk to people in Australia daily, uh, my friends, and, and they say that they wish they had the freedoms that America had, so, so be proud of that, uh, allow people to have their opinions, you can, you can live with, uh, other people's opinions and not be upset about it, so, uh, that's their right, uh, and I had my right as well, I think the only thing that I would say, uh, that I would apologize for is for anybody on the commission that had to deal with, uh, language or conversations that may be not very becoming of, uh, something that they would like to hear. Uh, we've, and, and each different times of, uh, our time up here in the commission have had to deal with difficult conversations and things that are said out there in the public, but please know, and I think most people do know, that I'm very proud of this city, I'm very proud of what I do, I'm very proud of this commission, as Dan and I have lived through some very nefarious times over the years, uh, of different conversations, and I will tell you that I, I'm, I have yet to see a commission that is this unified to do what's best for the city of Buchanan, and we have by far the best city staff and city manager, uh, that, that anybody could ask for, so, uh, please know that, that the noise that's out there is noise, and, uh, we will react in kind, and just like anybody else knows, I do not get upset with people, I do not raise my voice, uh, we will have a conversation, and if we can't have a conversation, then there won't be a conversation, so, um, please be respectful, respect other people's, uh, opinions and be kind, so, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I got one for you.
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, Stark Community Center, if nobody's been out there, they have cleaned that place up, they have already paved the parking lot, she is tearing it up out there, um, it's completely, it looks brand new from the outside. Yeah, I mean, it looks fantastic, and I'm sorry I didn't remember, remember your comments, but it needed to be said, because that's gonna be one heck of a thing for the community, and that's all I got, Norma.
Awesome, thank you, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Beyanski.
Yep.
Wida.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Your turn.
Thank you.